Is there anybody online?
No.
Oh.
We just had on the.
There's a waiting room, right?
Yeah.
I don't know. They have Paul's Creek in here, but they don't have there's a wedding venue besides a question. It's also waiting there.
Yeah.
I don't know if she has it written or.
Yeah, that's that was my question for her.
Yeah.
She pops into my office and we go off and so I can ask it then.
Yeah.
Alright, so we will call this meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We don't have a flag.
We don't have a flag, well you can.
We can loop around that.
Real quick.
Loop around that, so.
There we go.
There you go.
The flag of allegiance is this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, living, free, and justice for all. Okay, audience of citizens, we have nobody in attendance here and. Uh, is there anybody in attendance online? It doesn't appear so.
Nope.
Okay. Approval of minutes, so we have four sets of meeting minutes. Just high level briefly through them, we have our usual June 10th meeting. Our July 8th meeting for the opening of bids. July 15th meeting for the determination on the bid recommendation. In which no bids were accepted, and then the 12th is just a sheet saying that we did not hold the meeting due to lack of corn. Are there any questions or any revisions to the meeting minutes?
No.
There's no questions or input, can we have a motion to approve? All four sets of meeting minutes on the docket, A, B, C, and D.
Motion.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Scott and Mark. And then unfinished business, so the first section of unfinished business is item A, Phase 2 Surveyor, RFP. So just a recap that we issued letters to the firms that submitted bids. And let them know that we would not be proceeding forward with those. So with that, I believe we could take this off the agenda, I mean, this is always an issue we can revisit down the road.
I I think.
At a future point in time.
I think we should revisit it after the election with the Board of Selectmen. Because we really need to break some law itself. Yeah, we only do a couple, but you're working on a grant.
Yeah, so the only reason I have this on here still is because the grant for. Um, the surveying and breaking up the lots and all of that stuff is coming up in October. So I'm gonna start writing it soon with your help if you don't mind. And get that submitted, that way, you know, we get in that process. It's gonna take a few months for the grant to actually get accepted, so.
And I do think that is a better path of securing the funding ahead of time.
Securing the funding.
Considering now that we know what it costs, securing the funding ahead of time.
And then we're also gonna have new selectmen and they might be want, they might wanna go ahead with it.
We don't want them to pull out of something in the middle.
Or you might say. Exactly, so then we'll have clear direction for the new set of selectmen.
Yeah, and we can actually gauge their interest in it ahead of time so that we don't waste our time.
Exactly.
So should I go for the grant or should I hold off till next year?
No, go ahead.
No, I'd start preparing it.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then, cause um, yeah, I I'd I'd start preparing it and it's something too that. Um. I mean, we can still make recommendations.
Right, yeah, I think.
And there's still be, I mean, we could still. Reach out to, I mean, if we wanted to, we could gauge the interest of the different candidates and something like that. If we were really concerned about it being shot down.
I know, like, a couple of candidates I feel are pretty strong and are probably going to win. I know their views are pro industrial bond, push forward. You know, it's depending on where they sit. One, if one of the two that I'm thinking of becomes for a selectman. I think, yes, he's gonna wanna push forward. Definitely, but we'll have to see.
Yeah, and and if it's if it's grant money, it's kinda hard to turn down if if. Depending how much the grant money covers, right? Cause the grant money could cover a portion of it, it could cover all of it.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, you could cover it 75,000, I think we, I think we could do the 40,000 on the low bid. You know, the additional 40,000 and get some of these lots broke up so we can stock Phase 2. If not, we'd have been a several land forever, we need to.
Well, one of the things we need to think about too, when it comes to that, is there are a lot of items in there and Peter brought this up was uh. Now, there's a lot of items in those bids for the surveying that if there's vegetation in place. It's they're gonna bill us for taking it down or or expense it to us or have us take it down in order for them to do it, so. I think maybe, you know, I mean, we would have to send it to bid again. But we could have some more clarifying pieces in there about. The vegetation, so there's no surprises or or. You don't want a series of change orders that come in from billing based upon their fee schedule.
I mean, we have a lot of loggers in this town. People that do logging and land clearing, so we could probably, if we had to, contract one of those. And get a bid from a few of them. Alright, you're gonna work with the surveyor, you're gonna have to cut some sight lines. They only have to be four or five feet wide.
Yeah.
And I'm sure we could find someone in this town.
And they can do much harder than that too.
You know, cause now we're gonna, we'll be surveyed in the wintertime, but it's a lot easier to clear. So I think we could find someone in the town to work with the surveyor and get on a separate bid that would give us a price to do the sight lines.
So the way the grant works is applications are due in October, but we don't actually have an answer for until about April or May. Or, so it's gonna be, we'd be waiting quite a few months, but at that point, we could discuss, you know. RFP, what we're actually looking for, get the board selection on our side and then proceed with it at that point.
Sure. Okay, no, that sounds great and those timelines probably work pretty good, so.
How long, how long after approval do you have to spread the grant?
That, I'm not sure, I would have to double check.
Most, about a year.
Most are about a year.
We just made the combinations day to day, that kinda gave a 26 and to begin on 27, it worked.
Right.
Pretty good window. Okay, so uh, we'll leave this on there. For updates on writing the grant.
Yeah.
Essentially, so. Um, we'll have an update next meeting. Because if it's due in October. We should have much longer answer by the end of submitting it, then once we submit it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so can we have a motion to table item A, Phase 2 Surveyor, RFP?
I make a motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, new EDC members. Uh, new EDC members, uh, so we have another opening, cause Ross resigned from. Each of the boards in town, the P and Z end here.
Really?
Really. Yeah, so he he just said he's been doing it for about 17 years and he said he's just, he's 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 done with it and ready to focus on other things, so. You know, he's got big, he's got horses and big, he likes to travel, goes to the lot and stuff, but the feedback from him was that. You know, he was just, um, you know, this was easier on him than P and Z was, P and Z was a little more stressful, but. He was just ready to focus on other things for good, so. And then we have two vacancies as well, any updates on those or?
We're looking for potentially three new members.
One voting member and two alternates.
Okay.
My hope with this was for Family Day, um, people would be able to. Come and sit at a booth and just tell people what we do on the EDC, uh, what we've accomplished, what you like about it and all of that stuff. I know Family Day is only, what, four days from now, but we could always reach out to Lynn and see if we could get a table and set up. I'm gonna be there either way, so I have my own table.
I know we talked about this before, I won't be volunteering. I'll be there with my family and stuff and I've tied up enough very good weekend, that's uh, that's not gonna apply. Like, we wanted to put a display together or something, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, I just have to give information, I don't know, we just have to hand it out to anybody who's interested.
I I may ask one other person if they wanted to join EDC, so there is interest in joining the mission. I'll have to follow up with them.
Okay, there might be more interest to um. Around the election or after the election and and maybe.
Just to put some more people that wanted to get on that were denied by the former selected.
Yeah. So I mean, we could put. We could put it, put it out there around election time or something, where people are more aware of this sort of stuff is an option. But if anybody ever had recommendations, we can take those.
I think too, if if now and then we could put it on the board out front, you know, uh, looking for EDC members, economic development.
I think there might already be something up there looking for EDC and a couple other board members. I know we have stuff in the town hall that then we're looking for people too. I can put it up on Facebook too.
Yeah, and I'm trying to recruit somebody who is a for her Sterling resident. And just recently moved back, so.
Okay. Okay.
Um. Anything else on that front or?
I've asked a bunch of people.
Yeah.
I mean, I tell them it's only 10 meetings a year, it's, you know, they usually an hour or so. You know, but just, I don't know, people don't have.
Yeah. Yeah.
Interest. I mean, we've lost a lot of members in the last few years too.
Yes.
I mean, we, yeah.
Long timers, that have been on forever.
Why, no, we lost, we lost Neil's wife, yeah.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, can we have a motion, I mean, we'll keep this on here till we fill the slots, so. Uh, do we have a motion to the table, item B, new EDC members?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. EDC financials, so we have a few financial reports. We had financials from last year that still needed to be uh, approved, right?
Yes.
So the ones from last year that needed to be approved, those were, which states did we have approved, upturned?
So we had approved up till December 31st, so we're looking for January 1st, 25 through June 30th, 25.
And so just so everybody knows, I had gone through January through June and worked with Sarah, there were a couple of items that were. Booked for wrong accounts that were corrected, right? So those were corrected, there were a couple, um, and it was between, it was between, just so everybody knows, I say a couple accounts. It was really assigning it to the account uh, between the incubator as opposed to the industrial park, is what it was.
Sure.
Um, so there were a couple, and it was with the cell phone tower. Uh, which should go to the industrial park and then went to the incubator building. And then we went through, she pulled all of the invoices for the cell tower. Because the way the descriptions were, there were multiple transactions all at once thrown on there together, you couldn't tell what was what. And the descriptions weren't clear and they all said rent instead of the profit sharing and the rent. So went through each and every profit sharing statement, like we're each and. First of all, identified all the flat fee rents that there are, the $1,500 flat fee rents. And then also went through each and every profit statement to assure those were accounted for within it, and they were, there were a couple of transactions that. Uh, need to be corrected, but there were some that were booked together and the description you couldn't tell, so I hope that they weren't there, but they will be given, they're two amounts grouped together. But Sarah is adjusting and you'll see it on the report already, where she's adjusting. SBA rent is the flat rent they pay us, the 15, 20, 88 a month, $1,520.88 a month. For lease the tower itself. And then separately, she's changing the other, the description of the other one to profit sharing, which is what it is. Where we get a share of the profits from the revenues that are driven off that tower. So there's two transactions for each one, so flat fee rent for 15, 20. And then the profit sharing, which is a portion of the proceeds, where they send us a statement of what they earned and we get a percentage of that.
Okay.
So that's what was in the email that was sent out too, you have April through June there of that revenue. And then we also had, uh, let me see.
I don't know, it was July.
And it was, uh, July, yeah, July, cause we're not through quarter three, so all we're looking to approve now is the the January through June of 2025. And there were some questions we had a few months ago that got answered, and then my questions and everything was tied out for those revenues. I'm okay to approve those, um, January and June, is it both of them or just the revenues for January? Both, okay.
Let's play it safe and do both of them.
Okay. I thought we approved the expenses already, but that's how we can do, we can do both. And then the other one is April through June, it was just our, there was nothing significant on there, just the typical items we're used to seeing. And when you see bank statement adjustment as the revenues, it's just the interest postings that are related to these accounts. Cause the money all sits in one account at the bank and then it gets split up to the different fund balances back here, so that's what the. Uh, bank statement adjustment you see, uh, at the top of the revenue report is, it's about a hundred dollars a month roughly. But oh, yeah, we also went through all the rent payments out of the, the business facility there to make sure they were all there. Cause there was some questions on the way that they were, some of it had to do with the fiscal year and what kind too, so. Uh, but those were all there as well. So I am, I'm okay with approving. Profit share, the the uh, the revenue and expense reports from. January through June of 2025, did anybody have? Any questions on any of the expenses or income on those reports?
I didn't see anything that looked bottom line.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, it's not like.
There's not too much that runs through it, so.
Peace with that, but yeah, I didn't see anything that was like, oh, this is a crazy price, at the time we had the $1,000 electric bill, whatever it was, you know.
But if everybody's okay with um. These statements, can we have a motion to approve the January 2025 through June 2025 income and revenue reports? Joe, I mean, not revenue and expense reports, I'm sorry, I just said the same thing twice. Alright. It's been a while, man.
We'll listen to that.
Scott makes motion, also seconded by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, Sarah, thank you for all your work on that, there was a lot of back and forth, but going through all.
Okay.
And pulling all of the. And again, some of it, nothing to you, but from the turnover that occurred, there was a lot of other things in town, so just making sure from this perspective, everything was tied out.
I'm worried about, cause that's my second, or my first position here, so.
Next item is the brochure, the business directory, and Sarah, did you have an update here, you have a directory in the back of the package, I would even go to ask.
Yeah, so in all of the packets, I included what I have currently for the business directory. What I would like for you guys on the commission is just to take a look at it. Um, see if maybe you have other information for some businesses, if you know any other people with businesses. Just make a note of it, add it to it, come back next meeting or email it to me, so I can get them added to it. I would like for by next meeting to have everything up on the website.
Okay, then are you gonna ask people to, to be, to sponsor it?
So we haven't made it to that point yet, right now, all we're doing, because it's free to just get all the businesses up on the website.
Okay. Yeah.
Right now, all I'm doing is trying to get it up there, so we have some sort of business directory online.
Um.
Yeah, mine did, I closed my business down, I don't know why that's still on there.
So what this is, is this is a culmination of what Renee had for businesses on her business directory. And also we going through Google and searching for businesses in Sterling. Well, like I said, there's a lot of businesses on here and um. I don't live in Sterling, so I don't see all of the everyday workings of Sterling businesses. And hopefully you guys will have more insight on some of these businesses.
Okay.
Know which ones closed and which ones are open. Unfortunately, at the town hall, we don't really get any status changes for businesses if they close down, so. My resources with the town clerk are very limited for some of these businesses.
I have a question, this is. Just for my own education. So Ecom Town, Turkey Farm, they're right on the line, right? One side of the road, Sterling, one side Mooseup, their address at Mooseup, are they part of the Sterling?
Yeah.
Control and everything?
They are.
Okay.
So the, a lot of these businesses have Mooseup mail or physical address, but their mailing address is Sterling.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody who's in Ecom gets their mail to Mooseup.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good start and I'm sure you'll get some feedback from some people like Mark here or other people as well. Okay. I think it's a great start to get it up and running, and will this be through the the business directory? Through the, through, what's the name of the header for the website?
Centiploss.
Centiploss. Centiploss, this, will this be through their directory service or is this just a posting of?
So I'm still working on that, so right now, it's just its own business directory page, there's no map or anything attached to it. We don't have that subscription.
Yeah.
But the lady I talked to said there's a workaround that you can hyperlink the address in it and just click on it and it brings you to where it is.
Okay.
So there's a couple different options for it, but right now, what I'm trying to do is get the businesses at this point. I mean, I've had a couple people come to me with businesses to add to it. So slowly but surely, I'm building it up, but I mean, like Mark said, some of these businesses are closed, they're not open, so I. I don't wanna include them on the list if. You know, they're not in Sterling anymore or no longer in existence.
Are you gonna test the URLs before you focus on that, okay, and then we can clean up the ones. One thing if we're doing the the straight listing like that, that might be helpful is to put everybody with the website at the top. Right, and then the ones without a website underneath. But no, I think that's, I think it's a great start to getting something together here.
And I will say, this is a culmination of a few months' work, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, it doesn't look like it was easy to do all this.
Yeah, no, it couldn't have been easy.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other input or any other writings on the business directory?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to table?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. The last piece here for town hall. So Sarah sent an email with the old town hall documents. That email went out. August 25th. And it's got all the court cases related to it and everything. I haven't. Read through them all, I've read some of the demos that are in there and stuff like that, and pieces of it to try to get a high level understanding. Not surprisingly, Pete read the entire thing from front to back. So he has. Some opinions on what's, there are some information to report on what's within there, so we could wait for him for that piece of it.
Okay.
If we prove it, but there was a question, there was an heir that, uh, or someone that said they were the sole heir, uh, that. Was pushing to get it returned then, um, back about 15 years.
I mean, I would gladly give it back to them with a condemned notice that they have to straighten the building out or tear it down and pay for all the pavement. And he has a tax goal too for the year, I mean, I totally in favor of that.
I don't, I I don't know if.
Put it back on the tax roll.
I I would.
Cause I don't think they would wanna do it, maybe look at the cost.
So then, I wouldn't. And I know we talked about this before, I would have condemned the building and give it back to them just because I think that's. I just think it's pretty poor ethically to do that, cause the town destroyed the building. And then you're gonna condemn it?
It's been going on for 14 years.
But the, but to condemn the building and say they gotta take it down and remediate it or hand it back to the town, I just have a hard time, I I I would not vote to. Ethically, I would.
I don't know, it's a. You gotta end it though, because you just.
Oh, I agree.
You gotta end it, so it's like, if you want the building.
Yeah.
Here's the building, but you have to get rid of the lead paint and get all the asbestos out of the building and then you could refurbish it or whatever, but you have to do the thing, but that's. But you get a free building, so you're just gonna pay for all that work, remediation, and then we get it back on the tax rolls.
Yeah.
Or they have to say, no, we don't want the building, and then we have to make a decision, are we gonna have the building ripped down? And we're gonna do something with it, but it it just needs, it's been going on for almost 15 years.
So I don't know, but there were some. Documents and Pete could probably speak to it better, but there were some references in there too, and I didn't see it, but I I saw it mentioned in some of the legal memos. Where the plaintiff was saying that there was a duty of the town to take care of the premises and take care of the building. So I don't know if he has the legal standing to to actually prove that or anything, but it wasn't some of the legal complaints. Was that the town had a responsibility to care for the premises, so I don't know. I'd have to reboard with it, but it wasn't some of the.
Town didn't really do a fine. A year or so before we got out of there.
Yeah.
The town did re-roof it, so, I mean, that's something they did know.
I I'd be fine, I mean, if they. I don't know, it it's a tough situation, but if they. I have a hard time condemning it and giving it back and telling them, here it's condemned, you now have to pay for.
Well, you don't, you don't have to necessarily condemn it, you didn't want it back, we know it's town beconfed.
Yeah.
We don't have to condemn.
Yeah, we don't have to condemn it, like Mark says, but. It's, you have to bring it up your code.
But then to do anything with it, they're gonna need a seal, they're not gonna get a seal with, like, thanks for this.
Yeah. So basically, the building is condemned.
Right.
Till they get the mediation done, but I mean, you get the building and the land, so whatever that costs is what you're paying for the building. But then the building back on the tax rolls, I mean, and now you're getting tax revenue from it. And I don't really think, we have the money to rip the building down.
Yeah.
Level the ground and then do a park or whatever we wanna do, I mean, we have a, we have a nice facility here. At the Sterling School, we also have a brand new school, and we do have all the pieces of property in town, if we really want to. We can do something with it.
Yeah, I mean, the value there is the land behind it.
Yeah, I mean, we still have, we still have a little, the rear view site down in Sterling, you've got two huge blocks there across the lake. That we own, that we could do something with, so, I mean, if we really wanted, Sterling people wanna really do something or make something special. We have land available to do it, but this building needs to either, either become ours and then we, then we can get the town people to figure out a direction with this. Or give it back to these people and say, it's yours, but you, now it's, now it is a tax bill, there you go.
Yeah.
Fix it up.
Yeah, one way or another.
Yeah, it's just gonna, it's just been going on for 15 years.
Okay.
I mean, we moved in this building like first on EDC.
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree, and something needs to be done, and if it goes back to the years, it goes back to the years and they figure out what they wanna do with it, but um. To your point, it's just holding it and doing it nothing and letting it deteriorate. What they wanna do with it, but, um, to your point, it's just holding it and doing it, nothing and letting it deteriorate. Doesn't serve any purpose.
No.
And there's still an easement to the land behind it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it, so.
If you wanted to do something with the land behind it, you could just pay the easement price as an entryway to the land back behind it.
Yeah.
Which you see all the time.
Yeah, and, and if they do that, then they, they, let's say they fixed that building up, and they built two houses down on the other land. Well, now you've started up fifteen grand tax revenue.
Yeah. Okay, um.
I mean, that's pretty much our agenda, is to give the people of Sterling tax, tax relief. By bringing in business and, and creating a ta, a tax base with industrial buildings to help, you know, the average homeowner.
Have we heard from the owners of the building?
Uh, from the, from the heirs? Yeah, so there was a lawsuit, that's what all these documents are that Sarah sent out, there was a lawsuit about it.
I remember the first.
No, it kinda like, it kinda fell off, it's from like twenty ten, um, I mean, they were, they were.
They were pretty repetitive.
They were denied from some of their, you know, um.
Yeah, I read some of that, I didn't read all of it, but. I didn't know if they'd been in contact after that.
Yeah. So, but no, it's just been kind of out of stance, though, and it's just sitting there, blappeted, and, uh. The, the town wants to use it, use it, but if it doesn't, I mean, that, that family. Gave that land to the town out of the goodness of their heart, so the town could have a Town Hall. And so either use it for that purpose that you said you were, that you agreed to legally, or. For fun, you know, I know the town wants to hang on to it, but, I mean, it's. Kinda hard to get goodwill from people in the future if that's what you're in.
Yeah, I was hoping to hope the fire department would go there, because they would want to build the building.
What were they gonna do with it?
It's safe to knock the building down.
I already asked them, they don't want it.
Yeah, but I just thought that would be a good location for a fire department, you know, they could move up the road. And maybe re-rove real close to their location they are now. I mean, if they cleared the room back, they could bring the fire trucks in around the back, turn them around, and then, you know, have double garage doors drive in there, but.
If you got enough space for your shit, you put a dump in down on the side, right?
Yeah.
Alright, did we wanna, uh, table this until our friend, uh, Peter can give us his, um.
Sure.
Detailed analysis on.
I made a note, Tim.
Okay, I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, new business, um, any new business?
No, really, at some point, we need to break these lots up, get some lots broken up, I mean. Or the other, the other project we have, at some point, is we need to go behind the industrial building and clear this rock pile out. You know? Yeah, we have that rock pile out behind there, yeah. You know, if we get one of these stone companies, maybe they need some rock, and maybe willing to work for the town, we give them the rock and. Let them chip away at it, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, I mean, they just need extra room for loading dock, but eventually, you could build another building behind here.
Yeah.
And we could have another incubator building, you know, something else we could look into, do a grant for, but.
Yeah, yeah, I always just love to say that, I mean, funding have to be secured for that, I would say.
The problem.
Eventually with the RFP, that would, or would be preferred to at least identify some sort of.
The problem we would face with that is our incubator building isn't actually being used as incubator. It's being used as a warehouse, so they're gonna throw out some white flags because of that, so.
Well, that was released from all of the, uh, requirements there.
Oh, okay.
So that, that building was released, even all of the employment require, all of that stuff, that was released. Fifteen plus years ago, uh, fifteen, twenty years ago, and they have to release documents for that, that that's no longer a requirement, which is why we re-roved the leases, to remove. Those requirements from the leases as well.
Plus, I think if we build a new building, you, you got, you know, you, you, building technology has improved a lot in the last twenty years.
Yeah.
You know, so you would build more of a, probably an eco-friendly building, uh, that would be catered to a certain kind of business that you would probably want to, you know. That's something we have to discussion on, but. Set it up a little differently.
For, uh, for any other business, one of the things I wanted to bring up and just confirm with everybody is, everybody should have received, or everybody did receive, they're on the email. An FOI, uh, FOIA request, Freedom of Information Act request. Um, did everybody have a chance to look through and, um. Confirm whether they have or don't have anything pertaining to that request? I looked through my emails, I didn't have anything. Um, I mean, we never, that, those topics never came to the committee, I never had any other discussions with that in regards to EDC. So I had nothing in my email.
I don't either, anybody talk up the line about the one, then I don't have an email.
Okay. Mark, you looked?
I got nothing.
Nothing, okay, I have nothing, so, I'm gonna respond, I'm gonna, um, I do have to touch base, uh, uh, with Nicole. Uh, just to make sure and confirm with her, um, that her email's clean, but I didn't wanna just respond to myself, I wanted to get the whole committee's feedback. And then reach back with a simple response, the initial response that was required that I gave was. We have received your request, we'll be looking into it and contacting you, and I asked if they had, uh, any timetables they were looking to meet, and they didn't respond, so. If I don't hear a timetable, it happens when I ask, um, so. Uh, I'll get back to, I'll confirm with Nicole hopefully this week, and, and then, um, I'm sure she'll be in, I'll get back.
It seemed pretty straightforward, they just wanted our emails.
Yeah. Pretty simple. Well, I think, I mean, I mean, in the request, I get the request, and I know there's a whole bunch going on there, but I get the request where it's, um.
Not really pertaining to EDC, no.
Right, they're just looking for any discussions that happen at the town pertaining to their business, and.
Since they just asked abroad.
Yep, so they asked us, we did it, never came here, um, and that's it, so. I think anything would have been like planning its own. Can't hurt that.
It doesn't do it, I mean.
Nope.
That's all to do with.
And I didn't mind, I mean, with the amount of junk mail you get and everything like that, it's not hungry, so. Okay, so I'll, so everybody here, um. Okay, so I'll respond, and I'll have us all on that response, I'll just confirm with Nicole as well, so. Uh, Judy, it does have you on here, it was an email, JudithAndrey@yahoo.com, but if you don't use it, you won't have anything.
Right, so.
And then, uh, Marisa, who's, uh, is this Ross, Sparky, three one oh seven? Oh, yours, Sparky, alright. He wants to call you, Sparky, it's the mark.
Uh, they're always moving fast.
Uh, reason, okay, perfect, alright, so. Reason one is, uh, okay, so I'll just confirm with Nicole, that's it.
And while we're on that. We are offering this to every single board and commission. If you would feel more comfortable having a new specific Town Hall email. All you need to do is come to me, give me your name, your birthday, and I can set you up with a new one. If you don't want that, that's fine, don't worry about it, but we're, we're offering that to everyone.
What email services would that connect to?
Just Gmail.
Just Gmail, it's a Gmail address, just connect Outlook or anything like that, or something?
Okay. That would only be necessary if this was the boy mobile, which I don't really think it's going to, to us, because we have nothing to do with that.
But we're just offering it to everyone, so.
Yeah.
I honestly might do that, just because my personal email gets cluttered up so much on this thing, that I have you include my, my work email all the time.
As chairman, you get an email.
Okay.
So I think Ashley has an email for you, so.
Alright. I'll do, uh.
You write down to Ashley.
Sparky four two one. Um. Alright, uh, any other, um. Any other items?
The only other thing I have is discussion was had with board selection, that we're putting all available town properties up on the website. So that's gonna include the industrial park lot, so just so you guys know, that is going up on the website, hopefully that'll bring more. Eyes onto the properties we have.
Okay.
We got a piece of property right over here, too, I mean. That, you know, everybody forgets about, was that seventy acres right here?
We have a lot.
Right, Robin's Road.
Oh, the one, yeah, in Woodstair, yeah, where they're gonna build the, they're gonna build a school there, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of land now. Well, around between fourteen and fourteen A.
Yeah.
We all realize that's a pretty big piece of woods.
Yeah. Where is that?
Between fourteen and fourteen A, it starts where the old dog pound is.
Yeah.
And it goes all the way through, like, this house is on the front, but it's, it's almost like landlocked, but it runs from the dog pound all the way up to seventy acres.
And the stone structure is on fourteen, that's right.
There's some swamp, a lot of its woods. I mean, you could build something in there, there's, there's plenty of dry land, I mean, there's some swampy, down, down like in a look to the left, like when you're going back towards like the trestle. But then it gets back up into highland in there. So.
Okay, um.
That'll be something, the sub design, it's gonna sound absurdly.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but there's other land I'm saying available, like, if we wanted to do some projects later on down the line with the town. Probably put some buildings in there, you know, like incubator building or something, I don't know. But the, the town does have other land for future use, where if we have something come up, we could do something else. I mean, the school, from what I understand, is the school population is dropping every year, so.
I'm putting two in there now.
Yeah, but there's a lot. On average, though, on average, it's been going down.
Yeah.
You know, ten, fifteen kids a year.
Well, if you wanna give me a voucher to send my kids to Woodstock Academy, and we're not disappearing. That's what, uh, Brooklyn does.
Alright, well, you know what, the way things are going, you never know.
Yeah.
Might be all voucher system someday.
Alright.
Somebody gets a voucher, there you go, go where you want, but you gotta pay for your own transportation.
Any, uh, is there something else, a motion to adjourn?
Sounds good.
One second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie, stealing.